Welcome to the Bothell City Council Regular Meeting of February 20, 2018. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, and every and just one. Okay, so the first item is the meeting agenda approval. Does anyone have any changes to the meeting agenda? Want to pull anything from consent? I'd like to pull the AB 18028, Letter to Sound Transit. And then, I did have a request, an unusual request. There's a member from the Safe Streets and Sidewalks Committee who's here, who would like to comment, but would like to comment after the update. Does council have any issues with letting someone speak at that time? Okay, great. Remind me, though. Okay. Okay, moving on to the projected agenda. Does anybody have any, anything for the projected agenda? You guys are so easy. Thank you. Okay, so Review of Public Engagement Opportunities. Help us name our newest park. We're taking submissions to rename the Wayne Golf Course now through February 28th. Visit our website for more information. Visit City Hall February 5th through April 20th to view award-winning illustrator and Bothell resident Dennis Wunsch's work as we kick off the Bothell Arts Commission First Annual City Hall Gallery Exhibition. Okay, so moving on, we have a staff briefing from Jamal Mahmood on radar speed signs.
I am a traffic engineer with City of Bothell, and today I am going to talk about radar speed signs. As a traffic engineer, for so long, we are trying to help people drive the posted speed limit. So, we have tools to do that. One of the tools are the radar speed signs. As you see in the screen, this radar speed sign can display text and numbers. There are two types of radar speed signs. One of them is permanent, so we install it on the road and we leave it there for years, and we will give the data, and the goal is to alert drivers how fast they are going. And the other type is the portable speed radar speed sign, which is, this is the one I am going to talk about. The portable speed sign is the one, we install it from one place to the other, and this is based on the citizen's request. So who wants the speed sign? Usually, a citizen called the city, and they want us to, they want to see more officers on the road, they want to see police officers where schools, at the school time, and also they want to see officers at the artillery roads, where they think that there is speeding issues, along with their, they are hoping to lower the speed limit at some roads. Like, they think that the speed limit is high, so they are thinking to lower it. And I have been asked to lower the speed limit, for instance, at roads from 25 to 20 miles an hour. So, what is the purpose of the speed, of the radar speed sign? The radar speed sign, also known as driver feedback, it is to calm traffic, to reduce speed. So this is the main goal when we install the radar speed sign. So to make people or drivers aware of their speed. What kind of data we get from the radar speed signs? This is, the most important one is the speed and effectiveness, but in addition to that, we can get volume. Effectiveness, this is very important, which is, it tells us if the sign, if there's no sign, what is, how fast people are going, but when we install a sign, what is the impact? We did some tests around the city, and we found out that almost 70% of the drivers slow down when they see the radar speed signs. And when I say slow down, sometimes they are going like 40 miles an hour on 30 miles posted speed, so they go from 40 to 35, that is slowing down. Or, if the posted speed limit is 30 miles an hour, and they are going 35 miles an hour, they go down by a couple of miles, the speed will be 32. So that is what I see, 70% of the drivers. And 70% is not like fixed number, it varies from road to road, it varies from city to city, so these are approximate. In addition, typically, the speed reduction in the 85th percentile speed. What is the 85th percentile speed? It is if there are 100 people driving a road, and the posted speed says 30 miles an hour, 85 drivers of these 100 drivers, they go 35 miles an hour. So this is the 85th percentile speed, like the majority of the speed going that speed. And this is very important to the engineers. We do a lot of calculation based on this speed, the 85th percentile speed, which when we drive, we feel comfortable. Then, the test shows that overall compliance of the posted speed limit, so if the posted speed limit is 30 miles an hour, we are seeing about 50 to 70 people driving that close to the posted speed limit. And the last one is radar speed signs are effective for superspeeders. So if people going like over 20 miles an hour over the posted speed limit, and when the sign starts flashing, flashing, so that wakes them up. And I witnessed on Fourth Avenue West, I installed a sign, the radar speed sign, and people were going 20 miles over the posted speed limit on Fourth Avenue West, near Frank Love Elementary School, and that is, the posted speed was 30. So people going 50, or 45, 50, so that is, that's a lot. Now, the effectiveness, I said that the sign measures the speed, volume, and effectiveness. Effectiveness is very, very important, and as I said, that it lower the speed by 70%, people lower their speed limit. What we did, we did two tests. First one, we installed the sign with the mode off. So the sign is there, it's dark, it doesn't display the speed. And we collected the data, we collected speed, basically. And we left the sign for almost a week. Then, we turned on the sign, so the sign is on the display mode. So drivers, driving the road, they can see their, their speed. And then, after the second week, we compared the effectiveness of these signs. We found out almost 70%, of the people lowering their speed. So the signs are very effective, and the effectiveness is measured by the sign. The sign itself give you, this is, the sign is effective. Also, we said that this sign is lowering the speed, and it's very, very important to know that. If a pedestrian was hit by a car going 40 miles an hour, the fatality rate is very, very high, almost 90%. So if a car hit a pedestrian 40 miles an hour, the chance of survival is 10%. While if the car hits a pedestrian going 30 miles an hour, the chance is 50/50 for survival. And if they are going 20 miles an hour, which is around the school, the percentage of the survival is very high, almost 90%. That is if they are going. So when you are in your neighborhood, and sometimes you call us, in your neighborhood, the posted, the posted speed is 25 miles an hour. So when you call us and say, hey, somebody is going 40 miles an hour, 40 miles an hour, so placing a sign like that in your neighborhood, it saves life. And this is the same thing, that this result shows the radar speed sign raise the speed awareness. So people, drivers, they can see how fast they are going. Also, studies, study repeatedly show that when alerted by radar sign, speeders will slow down. Now, why do radar, radar speed sign works? The most important is, when you are driving, some drivers are either texting, eating, drinking, or whatever they are in the car, so they are not paying attention. So the radar speed sign is, has the ability to change your behavior. And how you change your behavior? First, you look at the sign, and you get the, you collect the information. You know that the posted speed limit is 20 miles an hour. Now you are going 30 miles an hour, so you collect this information. Second, you see the radar sign start flashing on you, so it wake you up, say, hey, I'm not doing something right. So what is the consequences? You lower your speed limit, hopefully. These signs are tools we use, engineers use, to calm traffic, and this is very important one. These are used at many places. They are used at municipalities, cities, towns, they are using these signs because they are very effective. Also, in your neighborhood, when you call, when you say that there is speeding, either we send a police officer, or we install the signs. Also, they are used at construction zones, which is defined as double if you are driving One other important place, we install them at school zone area. And right now, the school, what we have, we have the one on the right-hand side, that's what we, what we have at schools, which is just basically a school zone flashing beacon. We program it from the office, and before, like half an hour before and after school starts, those can flash. Now, they are added another element to the, to the school beacon, they are, they are adding the speed sign. And the speed sign, the radar speed sign could be programmed with the flashing units, or they can stay, the sign can stay 24/7. There's a video for 45 seconds, I would like you to listen to it. Let's see, oops. Be programmed with the flashing units, or they can stay, the sign can stay 24/7. There's a video for 45 seconds, I would like you to listen to it. Let's see, oops. Okay. Be programmed with the flashing units. Do you know how it works? The sign can stay 24/7. There's a video for 45 seconds, I would like you to listen to it. Let's see, oops. Oh, I think it's. It was working. Yep. Okay, here you go.
Hi, I'm Kelso with 310 Sign, and I'm going to give you a quick product overview of the very first Armored Speed Radar Sign. Speed radar signs are electronic displays that provide driver feedback in real time by displaying their speed right on the LED display. And radar signs are also known as driver feedback signs. Drivers, they end up switching from autopilot mode to an alert mode, in turn, reducing their speed to comply with the posted speed limit. Hi, I'm Kelso with 310 Sign, and I'm going to give you a quick product overview of the very first Armored Speed Radar Sign. Speed radar signs are electronic displays that provide driver feedback in real time by displaying their speed right on the LED display. And radar signs are also known as driver feedback signs. Drivers, they end up switching from autopilot mode to an alert mode, in turn, reducing their speed to comply with the posted speed limit. One of the really neat features with the TC400 is the ability to operate in stealth mode. By enabling stealth mode, all of the LEDs and indicator lights are disabled while still maintaining all the data logging functionality. This way, you can capture traffic data of normal driver behavior while motorists think that the unit is turned off or not working. Once you've captured your benchmark data, you can turn your display back on and collect data while it's operational to compare the results.
Then, the radar speed sign also works for the police departments, and I have therein to tell you how the public works and police work together to serve the citizen. And here therein.
Good evening, my name is Darren Timpey. I work for the Police Department, specifically, I'm the Sergeant of the Traffic Unit right now. And before the advent of these signs, in looking at where to deploy officers for enforcement, there was just a few conduits of information we would use. One was our observations, where did we see the most violations? Two, collision data, and whether that was us responding to those collisions, or getting that information for ourselves. And then three was citizen complaints. And I think now we take all of that in conjunction with data from these signs, and deciding where to best deploy our, our resources. For instance, recently, a commuter was complaining about speed on Brickyard, they commute via bicycle, and they were worried about speeding cars past them, it's 25. So we took the complaint, we asked Jamal to deploy the signs, and that was done within a few days. And I was able to call that citizen back and tell them what the data showed. And then also, the data tells us what time of the day the most violations occur, and northbound or southbound, directional as well. And then we can go out during those high violation times and change the behavior, and make it safer. So we find that all of those pieces of information make for a more useful use of our time, and we, it's a great asset to the Police Department.
I believe this is the end of our presentation. We are here to answer any questions you may have.
Great, thank you. Does anyone have any questions?
So just when you mentioned the sign, when there was a citizen request, is that, how permanent are those signs? I mean, do they get left there for months, a year, or, or is it more of a portable trailer type sign?
Thank you. This kind of signs is portable, and we place it for a week. And the week, actually, it will give us the general idea if there is speeding or not. Sometimes there is no speeding, it's just a receiving issue, so we do nothing. But if there is speeding, like if the 85th percentile speed is more than 10, 10 miles over the posted speed limit, I work with the police, and sometimes they go and enforce the area. In addition, we might come up through our neighborhood traffic program, to tools like other, other devices, to install in the road to make people slowing down. So the answer is about a week.
Councilmember Zorn.
Quick question. How many of these units do we have, and are they all in use about, at the same time? Or do they ever sit in storage waiting for a call to be used?
Thank you. In fact, we have six units, and we install two at one, at one road, for like northbound and southbound, for both directions. And they are hardly sitting because there are a lot of demands, and even if there is no demand, we put them around the schools, because we want to make sure that our kids are safe. Yeah.
Councilmember McCullough?
Thank you. I think it's really important that you have a citizen's complaint, opportunity for citizens to alert you. So could I alert you to, I guess I'd say 522 by the University of Washington, Bothell, and coming into the, from the 35 mile an hour to the 60? Have you ever kind of looked at that area?
Where is, where is?
University of Washington, Bothell.
Oh, I see, yes, yes. I have not been asked to look at it. I'll be more than happy to put the speed radar sign if it is in the city limit, maybe that area, it is not in the city limit, maybe that's for Washington State DOT. But however.
Good point. Good point.
Yeah, because that's a state route.
That's a state route. You're right.
Nice thought, though.
I notice it all the time. It is. From 35 to 60, it doesn't happen very often.
City Attorney?
Councilmember McCullough, through my experience as the infraction prosecutor for a number of years, I can assure you that that area is heavily monitored. Every infraction calendar, we had several infractions from the 11-100 block of SR522, which is that intersection where you can go to University of Washington. So the, the police are actively aware that it goes from a 60 to a 35, and that as you come around that corner, it's a, almost a blind intersection. And so that's why the speed limit is reduced to 35, so that by the time you can see the traffic light, if you're following the speed limits, you're able to slow down if it's red, and if there's a backup of traffic. So the police are very aware of that area, and it's heavily monitored.
Also, that section of the road is very well signed. There is 60 miles an hour, then there is advanced sign saying your speed will be 35 miles an hour, that is a yellow sign, then the regular speed, which is 35 miles an hour. You are very welcome.
I have a couple of questions. How much does each sign cost approximately?
Each cost, each sign costs about $3,000, $3,350.
And do they have a lifespan generally, or so far they just keep going?
Actually, they keep going, but still there is maintenance, we have to change batteries.
Okay, just curious. And then, does the effectiveness change over time? It sounds like we only deploy them for a week at a time, but I guess my curiosity is, if they sit there for very long, do people become annured to them and then start ignoring them? Or do we know that?
Actually, we do have permanent, permanent signs, and I believe the 85th percentile speed at that road is acceptable, within like four, five miles over the posted speed limit, like on 180th, there is, there is one. So people change their behavior, whenever there is, there is something alert them, I am, like when there is a display, your speed is 40, and the posted speed is 25. You know, the driver choose to ignore it, and others choose to obey. But we found out most drivers are good citizen, and they obey the rule, and they reduce their speed limit.
I guess I was just wondering if it's worthwhile having them at certain problematic locations permanently? That was my only thought.
That's very good question. In fact, we are developing criteria, this is a new program, we have it in public works for, for almost a year. We are going to establish a criteria, when can we install a permanent ones, which is like the troubling area, or maybe around the schools. Around the schools, I think they are very effective. And you know, whenever I go the, like Fourth Avenue West, there's school, Frank Love Elementary School, when we install the signs, people slowing down. There's no signs, they are going little bit fast.
Right, okay. Great, well, thank you very much. That was very educational.
You're welcome.
Oh, sorry. Councilmember McNeil.
Thank you. I think about four or five months ago, there were some signs up along Wanita Way, 100th.
Yes.
Was there any statistics done on that to see what the activity was along 100 there?
What do you mean by statistics?
Like, was there a lot of speeders running through there?
I believe so, yes. Actually, the posted, the posted speed limit on that section of the, of the road is 25 miles an hour. As a traffic engineer, I feel this is low. And the.
I'm sorry, you feel the speed is low?
That's correct. 25 miles an hour at Wanita Way is, I believe it's low. I didn't do the study, but I believe it's low. 25 miles an hour is for neighborhoods, that is, to me, is a little bit more than a neighborhood. So I don't remember the statistics, but I believe that the 85th percentile speed is much more than the posted speed, probably 35, I don't remember.
Along Wanita Way, 35 in a road like that?
That's correct.
Okay, so I'd be curious to, to see what engineering goes into that, because when we talk about roads around Frank Love, when I walked up around Frank Love there, those roads are similar, where you have the downhill, and then you have, you're going back uphill, so you have some blind spots.
Yeah.
But along Wanita Way, you have a lot of cars that pull out of neighborhoods.
True.
And the faster, you know, and I could be wrong, but to me, it seems like the faster those cars are going by, you, you might not be able to judge those cars that are coming out.
That's true.
And then you have the meridians adding on top of that, and I believe, if I'm not mistaken, there's been several incidences where people pulling out have hit the meridian trying to get around. So I'd be curious to how, how we look at engineering, and I applaud you for the, around the schools, because I think it's very necessary, but also with all the development that we're having, making sure that we're posting our, our speeds and using this to, to help the neighborhoods that are existing as well, I think would be, would be good.
Great.
So thank you.
You are very welcome.
Thanks so much.
Thank you.
Okay, I, I missed the roll call, so I just wanted to mention that Mayor Reum is, Rayum is in Hawaii and absent unexcused. Okay, so moving on to Council Committee reports. Does anyone have any? I want you to go first, so I can cross them off my list.
I'm going to keep mine short and sweet today, because I'm actually going to speak at the dais today, but, or excuse me, speak at the podium. But there's a couple things that SCA Pick this month that I wanted to note. One is the Initiative for the Land Conservation that went to the County Executive, and they're reaching back out to cities looking for support. I know we've been very involved in that process, but since the onset, there was several cities that were hesitant on supporting the program. And now, in the last SCA Pick meeting, several of those cities have fostered their support for the program. One thing very interesting to note is, the price tag for it has gone up quite a bit, but with that said, it's gone up because it's included lands within cities. And so the cities have started to support it, because there's, King County's actually supporting lands that the cities are trying to save. So I will be making sure that I send out to all the council members that packet of information, so that we can make sure that we either support or don't support, but I would like to have this council's view on whether or not we support it or not. Another thing that came up in the last Pick meeting is tobacco-free parks and stadiums. I believe, if I'm not mistaken, we are a tobacco-free park city. Is that correct? We are a tobacco-free park, so I will be happily reporting that back to Pick at the next meeting. In our stadium, I believe downtown Bothell, is, I know that's a school district stadium, but I believe that would be tobacco-free as well. So I will, I will reach out to the school district and make sure that I can report back that we are 100% tobacco-free. And that's King and Snohomish County, correct? All right. Fabulous. Another thing that came up is future levies, bond ballot measures. I believe all of ours for school districts passed, several school districts did not pass. There was a lot of angst around the table at the last Pick meeting. And for those who don't know, that all 38 cities, except for Seattle, are part of SCA, sit around a table, and we all talk about the issues that happened within our communities. And one of the issues that came up was all of the bond measures and levies that are coming up, and our communities having taxation fatigue. But one of the things that a lot of the council members were mentioning was, a lot of the cities are supporting these measures, because these are services that they want to have within their community, such as human services, public safety, the levies, they want to see those levies pass, because those are the services that they're looking for. So I was excited to hear that the, most of the public safety stuff passed, as well as the school bond stuff passed. So that was an exciting conversation to hear. Metro Connect's development plan, there were some conversations around how Metro's going to start working with the connections between park and rides and the different types of auto. auto autonomous vehicles that they're using now. And there's a really cool program, pilot program going on in Bellevue, where they're using vans, autonomous vehicle vans, to move people to and from. And I thought that would be a great opportunity for us to maybe have our seniors, local senior center, part of that program. So we reached out to the people that run that program and they're going to reach out to the senior center locally here and see if they might be able to help with a van. And that led into a conversation with King County possibly helping our senior center get a vehicle, because they need, they need an upgrade on a vehicle. So I was super happy about that. Let's see. So that was Pick. We have a regional law and justice committee meeting coming up Thursday. I'm excited to note that I was elected the new chair of the Regional Law and Safety Justice Committee. A very important committee, especially with things that are going on in our country today. Is very excited to be part of that. And hopefully look forward to Bothell presenting some of the things that we're working on with the Navigator programs, et cetera, in the future on that. Are you going to talk about, I'm sorry, are you going to talk about CSHOR and ETP?
Whatever you want to do. I have the notes, but you're welcome to.
I'm going to let you talk about those. So that, that'll be it for me for today. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay. I apologize in advance. We did not do council committee reports in January and there's been a lot going on. So I'll start with a February second meeting of the Regional Transit System Initiative. There, it was a meeting of representatives from all King County cities. And there was a presentation about needs, cost, cost estimates, revenue gaps, and revenue options. So this is, includes a network, discussions of, the network of thirteen hundred and sixty-six total miles within King County that are not covered by cities. So thirty, thirty-two percent of these are principal arterials, fifty-four percent are minor arterials, and two percent are freight. And the, the conversation centered around capacity costs. So current law revenue, I believe, has us at between seven and eight billion dollars. So that's what they expect to get. The cost for the current need are seventeen billion. So there was a discussion about possible funding options, which include things like fuel taxes and indexing to inflation, carbon tax. And then there was a pretty hefty discussion on tax, tax burdens on people and, and the fatigue that people are experiencing. And so there was a pretty robust conversation about how do we, how do we meet the needs and not increase the burden beyond what people can bear? So there was also a discussion about engaging corporations in, in these conversations to see what, what ideas they have. And also the need to engage numerous in Pierce counties, as the roads don't end at the county border, as we all know. Moving on to Transportation Policy Board, we were discussing the 2018 policy framework for regional project evaluation. And probably the biggest thing that happened was Pierce County introduced a motion to create or to make military installations the equivalent of regional growth centers when it comes to funding. And so there was a pretty, pretty, well, lively discussion about whether or not that was possible to do. And the amendment failed, the motion failed, because it was the first time that the Transportation Policy Board had heard this request. They had previously been talking to the Growth Management Hearing Board. So there was support that yes, military installations deserve, you know, funding and consideration, but SCA, which I represent on the Transportation Policy Board, had an issue with treating them exactly the same as growth centers, because growth centers the cities get to control. We don't get to control military installations. So to treat them the same, our feeling was that, that they're not the same. So there was discussion and I think direction to have staff look at how to treat military installations as we go forward. And a commitment by everyone in the room that not to keep pushing it down the road, but to actually talk about it and come up with a plan. Then there was, at the same Transportation Policy Board meeting, I thought this was super interesting, Washington State Department of Transportation State Facilities Action Plan. So they began this discussion with, everyone just says, why not just solve congestion? Well, to fix I five, I four oh five, and I ninety, just those three roads, to fix the congestion problem on those roads, it would require three hundred and eighty-five new lane miles for today's traffic. That's not including growth, which we all know is happening. That would be around a hundred and fourteen billion dollars. So for everyone that says, just fix it, now you know why we don't. So Wash dot is forming an I five working group to work toward the 2019 legislative session as, for an ask, in terms of what they can do to fix I five. And then we had a brief discussion on the Vision 2050, which is coming up, and the, the schedule. So right now in 2018, we're working on scoping of 2050, Vision 2050. 2019 will be a C review and draft plan, and 2020 will be the adoption. And then ETP. Briefly, King County Metro gave us an update on connecting transit program and parking, parking outreach initiatives. So they talked about some of the ways they're trying to increase effectiveness of parking, because they don't really want to build more parking. So there are some ideas about carpool permit parking, increasing enforcement, lease lot expansion. So they have a program. So if anyone in Bothell knows of a church or a community center that has parking to lease, to, to transit riders, let us know. Park and ride partnerships with Diamond Parking, Parking, sorry. And just various options that they're trying to work on in, in terms of making the most of, of our park and ride parking lots. We had a brief presentation from ACES about technology, transportation technology. And what I thought was really interesting is, they're talking about how quickly transportation technology is advancing. So for instance, an EV battery cost has dropped from one thousand dollars to two hundred dollars per unit. And the LiDAR, which is what you use, what you would use for an automated vehicle, a self-driving vehicle, those used to be seventy thousand dollars a vehicle and they're down to ninety-five. So that cost impact is definitely propelling this technology to come faster and faster. And then there was a vote on ETP membership. So the body voted to change membership from including one transportation advocacy group to inviting businesses, well, starting with one business to the table in hopes of expanding to several businesses represented in that group. Okay, one last one. So last Thursday, the mayor, council member Olson and I attended a Snohomish County Vision 2050 summit in Everett. It was a meeting of elected people and staff from cities within Snohomish County to begin planning for 2050. There are an estimated two hundred and fifty thousand more people that will be moving to Snohomish County by 2050. So we did an exercise to, I guess, help us explain, or help us understand the challenge that that's going to be. And so there were about twenty table groups and we were given maps and dots that ranged from representing twenty-five thousand people down to one thousand people. And we had to figure out where we would put the growth, if, if we were God. Most people, most table groups chose to put them along the I five corridor, because that's where light rail will be going. And don't, I don't want to scare anybody, because this was not, it's not set in stone, but most table groups put between ten and twenty-five thousand people in Snohomish County Bothell. So like I said, it's not, it's just beginning stages, but that gives you an idea of, of what's coming. And that is the end of my council committee reports. Okay, so moving on, visitor comments. So I'm going to read, addressing the council from the protocol manual. Each person addressing the council will give his or her name in an audible tone of voice for the record, and unless the council grants further time, shall limit the address to three minutes. No person other than the council and the person having the floor will be permitted to enter into any discussion, either directly or through a member of the council, without the permission of the chair. So the first person I have is Linda DeBolt.
Good evening. My name is Linda DeBolt and I live at one one eight zero four Northeast Seventy-third Street in Kirkland. I'm here tonight to ask for your support for AB eighteen dash zero three one regarding the Arch Executive Board recommendation for funding critical projects to help those in our community who are most in need of shelter. I extend my thanks for your past and present support as a member of Arch, and also my appreciation for the great work that Arch is doing to fund affordable housing and shelter services to our most vulnerable community members. As a concerned citizen in the Kirkland area, I've been involved as the chairperson for a coalition of faith-based, faith-based organizations in Kirkland and Bellevue that came together about three years ago to tackle the tough and ongoing problems of homelessness in our community. We call ourselves the New Bethlehem Project. And this has been a driver for development of one of the projects proposed for the Arch funding tonight. This is the Catholic Community Services and Sophia Way East Side Emergency Shelter for Families with Children and Single Women to be located in Kirkland. Holy Family Catholic Church in Kirkland, Saint Louise Catholic Church in Bellevue, Salt House Lutheran Church in Kirkland, and Catholic Community Services have been working in partnership to accomplish short and long-term strategies to provide help to families experiencing homelessness on the east side. Last year, our partnership broadened to include the Sophia Way and the city of Kirkland, too. Together, our scope is to address the needs of homeless families and single women in a substantive way. Over the past three years, the New Bethlehem Project has raised more than seven hundred thousand dollars in community support. And with this funding, we've accomplished the creation of a temporary day center for homeless families. And we've also helped to keep the emergency overnight winter shelter for families open year-round. These, however, are not permanent and round-the-clock facilities. The CCS Sophia Way Permanent Shelter for Families and Women will be such a place where families and women can come out of the elements, have their basic needs for food, shelter, a place to clean up and store belongings, and to receive assistance from trained case managers to get back on their feet and move towards stable housing, employment, and a hopeful life for themselves and their children. We've recently kicked off our private funding campaign to raise more money from the east side community. We call our campaign East Side Cares. Please take a look at the campaign brochure that I've provided to you tonight. So in conclusion, we greatly need the pooled support of local governments to help fund this project. So thank you in advance for your support for the Arch proposal, which we will enable this important project to move forward this year. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Connie Weiseth.
Thank you. Yes, I'm Connie Weiseth and I've been a citizen of Bothell for thirty-nine years. And I have just recently joined with Linda DeBolt on this New Bethlehem Project Steering Committee, because homelessness is something that we all see more and more all the time and it impacts us here in Bothell, not only downtown Seattle and Kirkland and Bellevue and Medina and everywhere around us. So I just want to encourage you to support this initiative that's on your agenda tonight. And for those of you who don't know, Arch stands for a Regional Coalition for Housing. And it's trying to address that issue of homelessness. And this organization, New Bethlehem, is really unique in that it's a combination of city, social service, and faith-based organizations working together, which is, I think, the future in our country. So I urge your support. Thank you.
One second. Councilmember McCullough.
Thank you. And I do have a question of either yourself, Connie, or Linda. I hear you talking a lot about the families. I'm concerned about our homeless youth. Do you address them as well?
We, we will address them in our proposed facility if they are part of a family. So the facility that we are sponsoring includes parents with children. For a homeless youth by themselves, I believe that the city of Redmond is the, the city that has a, a homeless shelter for youth that, that don't have adults with them.
So I do know that in North Shore School District, we have a hundred and forty-seven homeless youth. And so I'm just trying to pursue how we're actually addressing each of them.
Right, okay.
And I don't know what Kirkland has, but I'm sure close, probably.
Yeah. I, I think that the, the concept is that the various cities are sponsoring shelters, services for the different segments of the population. So Kirkland is focusing on families and women. Bellevue is focusing on men. And Redmond is focusing on youth.
Excellent, thank you.
Okay, next is John Loy.
Good evening, council and everybody in the audience. I just wanted to, oh, I'm John Loy and I've lived in the city of Bothell for thirty-two years. And been a very proud member of the North Shore School District in that time. I would like to comment on the vision that I see from the council. And I'd like to commend each and every one of you. And there's a few of you that have worked even harder. And that's all about the Wayne Golf Course acquisition that you've taken on. And just by the other issues that I see that you're addressing, not only are you meeting the needs of us and our children and our grandchildren, but you're tackling the big problems. And I know how hard that is. And for me, and this is, I wanted to say this to some of you, because you've done a tremendous job in securing that property and making it just a jewel for our area. And I just can't get over how much effort it took, the sustained effort, and just the, 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 the total, you know, the total effort you make every day. That's difficult and I appreciate it and I know our community does, too. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Catherine Jacoby.
My name is Catherine Jacoby and I'm a staff member at Imagine Housing. And I'm here on behalf of Imagine Housing to thank the city of Bothell for your support of affordable housing on the east side through investment in the East Side Housing Trust Fund. Because of your support of Arch and your contribution to the East Side Housing Trust Fund, Imagine Housing will be able to develop a hundred and thirty new permanent affordable apartments within the master-planned Estera Park development in Redmond, creating a welcoming, affordable space for low-to-moderate income individuals and families in our community. The Imagine Housing community in Estera Park will be walking distance from the Overlake Village Light Rail Station and next door to the Microsoft campus. It will also share the building with a hundred and thirty market rate units, creating a diverse, mixed-income community that truly models the diversity and inclusion that Redmond and the Estera Park master plan strive to create. This community will also feature a YMCA childcare center that will provide affordable childcare for low-income residents, as well as the broader community. Imagine Housing is committed to being a good steward of public funds and has, over the past thirty years, developed five hundred and seventy-six permanently affordable homes for east side residents. We are determined to address the housing crisis by creating more affordable homes close to good jobs, schools, transit, and resources, and providing onsite individualized supportive services to help our residents thrive. Thank you for considering Arch's recommendation to provide capital funds for the Estera Park Block Six B project.
Thank you very much. And next is Annette Loy.
Hello, Annette Loy. I'm with John Loy. And good evening. I want to thank all of you for being on the council and doing the hard work for all of us. It's good to stay home and watch the Olympics while you guys are going to meetings and, and doing, making all the great decisions. We just really enjoy the Wayne Golf Course Park. We're there two or three times a week with our little dogs walking on leashes. And so far, I have to report that everybody's been on leashes. So that's really nice. They seem to get the sign. But it's beautiful park, great open space, and we're looking forward to taking our grandson, who's two, there. But every, every. who's two, there, but every, we take care of him every Thursday, and almost every Thursday, it's been pouring, pouring rain so far, so. But my, I just had a quick question. I don't know who's in charge of those green bikes that appeared about two weeks ago or three weeks ago, but I walk around a lot on Thursdays with him in a red stroller, and sometimes those bikes are in the middle of the sidewalk, and it's difficult to move around them because I don't want to fall on them. I do have some of a balance issue, and especially the narrow sidewalks in Bothell, and if they could put them on the side of the sidewalks, that would be fine, but they're kind of in the middle of the sidewalk sometimes, right at where you want to cross the street, and it's nerve-wracking enough with a grandchild that you'd fall or a car would come by, and so I don't know who's in charge of that, but maybe somebody is, and I don't know what the company's doing or where they're supposed to be. That's it. Thanks so much.
So the attorney, did you want to say something?
I just want to let the public know that the city manager's been in contact with the regional officer of line bike to express that concern, so that is in the works.
Great. Thank you.
Okay. Next, Linda Benson.
Good evening, mayor, deputy mayor, the mayor's in Hawaii, I understand, and council members. Thank you for the opportunity to come before you to speak. I'm Linda Benson from the thriving metropolis of Duval, Washington, and a brand-new member of the Sophia Way staff. We provide services for women experiencing homelessness on the east side, including the city of Bothell. On behalf of our board, the community, and the vulnerable population of people that we serve, I'm here tonight to thank you for your past support of Arch and to express our gratitude for your consideration for the current Arch recommendations from the city, from the Housing Trust Fund. One of the projects in this round that you heard from Linda DeBolt earlier is a desperately needed shelter for families with children and single women. This project is a partnership of many entities, as identified by Linda, and now with your support, many east side cities, and will help ensure that some of these very vulnerable people, anywhere on the east side, will have one place where they can go to access all the services that they need: day center support, night support, case management, connections, community safety, in one place and under one roof. It's wonderful to know that this grand partnership will soon provide 100 more personal shelter spaces for families and women. We're talking about real beds and a place people can call a home base for a little while while they work hard to exit homelessness. On a cold night like tonight, it's a wonderful vision that the most vulnerable in our community will not be standing in the frigid cold or transferring from bus to bus waiting to get to the winter shelter and the dire foundational support they're looking for. Imagine also being one of these future residents 18 months from now waking up in one of these warm shelter beds with a high fever, nausea and the flu, and having the gift of just being able to be sick that day, not having to get up off the mat and leave the shelter by 7:30 a.m. with the knowledge that there is no warmer, safe bed for you to be sick in until 8:30 that night. A 24-hour shelter for our neighbors just can't happen soon enough, but with your support and the combined support of other public, private, and community contributions, it is going to happen. So thank you so much.
Thank you. That's the end of my sign-up sheets. Would anyone else in the audience like to speak? Please come to the podium.
Deputy Mayor, members of council, my name is Dan Landis, and I live in Seattle, Washington, and I'm here representing King County Housing Authority and specifically here to speak in support of Resolution AB 18-031, the funding recommendations of the Arch East Side Housing Trust Fund. But before I do that, I want to thank the city for its willingness to put general funds into the East Side Housing Trust Fund. It's only through the city's willingness to step forward and put money in the East Side Housing Trust Fund that we stand a chance to provide affordable housing for those who otherwise might get priced out of our cities. The project that we're developing that's included in the East Side Housing Trust Fund Recommendations is the Trailhead Project in Issaquah. The King County Housing Authority was part of a team that was selected by the city of Issaquah to develop a mixed-income, mixed-use, transit-oriented development adjacent to the Issaquah Transit Center in their central Issaquah area. The funding provided through the East Side Housing Trust Fund will allow 155 of the 350 units that will be developed there to be affordable for people whose incomes are 60% of the area median and lower, thus providing needed workforce housing and family housing for people who otherwise might not be able to afford to live in Issaquah. So I want to urge you all to support that, and I thank Arch for the good work that they've done, making sure that we can address all kinds of housing needs on the east side. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience who'd like to speak? Okay, I guess council member McNeil would like to speak as a visitor.
It's been a while since I've been here. Well, I wanted to take the opportunity to recognize and celebrate Bothell for something pretty cool in this month. This is, for those who don't know, this is, the month of February is African-American History Month, and something that, in one of the meetings I was just attending, each city celebrates something that happens within their city that is related to African-American history. And one of the really cool things that we can celebrate this year is we had a graduate from the University of Washington, Bothell. She's an African-American, and she graduated, and she was just honored in the city of New Jersey, Paterson, New Jersey, 225-year-old city, as being the first African-American poet for that city. And so Bothell, I just wanted to make sure Bothell recognizes that we do have a piece of February, and we, and I take honor in celebrating that little piece of history. I also want to say, do you have a son named John Loy? And I think Johnny, and you are with Inglemore now? Interesting. So I think I, your son coached my kids in football many years, many years ago. Yeah, so I thank you for your words. It's really an honor to be a part of this city council and serving with these council members, but as a citizen, I couldn't be more proud of my city and the things that my city's doing. Being out in the community and talking to folks, it's heartwarming to hear from our community, so I want to, first and foremost, thank the community, so, and the city staff for all the wonderful things they do. We don't often get to stand here and talk. It's been a long time for me that I've actually stood and talked to the council, but it feels a lot different being on this side than that side, so thank you very much.
Going once, going twice. Okay, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Do I have a motion?
Move.
Motion to pass the consent agenda. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, moved by council member McNeil, seconded by council member Agnew. Please place your votes. Rosemary, do you want to change?
Sorry, I knew that.
Can she just change it orally? Okay. Okay. So.
Thank you.
Thanks. So consent agenda is passed unanimously with Mayor Rayum absent and excused. So I pulled AB 18-028, and I gave forewarning because, look, already there's, there's Director Lenhart.
Good evening, deputy mayor and council. So this particular item on the consent agenda is really a follow-up to the study session you had last week with the Washington State Department of Transportation and Sound Transit, and what it is asking from the council is that they essentially work really hard to do better. The Sound, the ST3 package has the 405 bus rapid transit running in the general purpose lanes for the most part, as they talked to you about last week, and this letter is asking them to work towards improvements to 405 to reduce the congestion and to build more capacity for that transit than is currently contemplated.
So are there any questions? Council member McAuliffe.
I just, I'm asking you why you pulled it from the agenda.
Yeah, I wasn't sure if I got to speak first since I pulled it or how that worked. I'm not used to speaking last. I'm used to speaking first. I pulled it because, well, Council, Director Lenhart didn't mention, but I was in meetings with Senator Palumbo about the parking garages that are also requested in this letter, and I just, because of the OPMA, I often feel like I know stuff that not everybody else does, and I'm sure you know stuff that I don't know, and so I wanted to take this opportunity to talk about not just this letter, but the letter that the stakeholder group sent, just to get us kind of all on the same page so that they understand what our efforts are working toward and why we're sending these letters. And particularly this letter, I feel like the difference is not just the sign, the signature, but also the request for the park-and-ride capacity, which we had discussions with Senator Palumbo and Kelly from the U-Dub. So I just thought that would be a good opportunity to kind of catch us all up.
Sure. So would you like me to speak a little bit more to that as well?
That'd be great. Yeah, thanks.
So the letter also speaks to the need for additional park-and-ride parking. ST3 doesn't include any additional park-and-ride capacity north of Kirkland on 405. It does have parking, park-and-ride capacity along 522, but it doesn't have any additional park-and-ride stalls at Canyon Park, nor does it have anything downtown area for 405 riders. Kim Henry from WashDOT, you may recall, last week in his flyover included a conceptual drawing of a 1,000-stall parking garage on 522 and 405, and he was very strongly warning everybody that that is not currently funded. So this letter, it's sort of pushing both WashDOT and Sound Transit to really talk about these things in addition to what's already on their plate, because there is a demand for that parking, particularly for communities east of I-405 and north of 522 to access that 405 bus rapid transit. So this letter goes to the Sound Transit Board, and it also goes to the WashDOT secretary. The letter that came from various cities that Kim mentioned, as well as many prominent businesses in this area, as well as the university and college campus, that letter went to primarily the legislature, as well as, let's see, the, I think that also went to WashDOT and Sound Transit as well, but the target for that were the chairs for the transportation committees for both the state legislature, for the state senate, and the state House of Representatives. But it also copied the various legislative representatives all along that corridor.
That was it. I was just thinking it was a good opportunity to catch everyone up, and because it seems like all I do with my committee work is transportation, I thought everyone else might benefit from knowing what's going on. So with that, I'm happy to entertain a motion to approve the recommended action. Okay. Moved by council member McNeil to approve the proposed letter to Sound Transit and Washington State Department of Transportation. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay. Seconded by council member Olson. Please place your votes. By the way, thank you, Director Lenhart. Motion passes unanimously with Mayor Rayum absent and excused. Thanks. So you're back, because next up is AB 18-029, Safe Streets and Sidewalks Levy-Lidlift Annual Accountability Report.
Okay, so now we're bringing it local, into the local transportation. So before I launch into our 2017 annual accountability report, I wanted to cover just a little bit of how we got here and about background on the levy. And I also want to, a huge thanks to the Safe School Walk Route Task Force members who are here. There are quite a few of them here in the audience this evening, and I also have quite a few staff members, so if I stumble or if I need some detailed information to answer any of your questions, I'm going to be looking at primarily the back rows back there. So as a reminder, the Safe Streets and Sidewalks Levy-Lidlift, this passed the voters in November of 2016. The request was for a 50 cents per thousand assessed value property tax. It's a nine-year property tax, Levy-Lidlift, so we will be working on these projects for the next nine years. One of the things that we promised in the ordinance that put this on the ballot was that every year we would come in front of you, and we would also provide the community with an accountability report of everything we had done in the past year, as well as things we are planning to do in the coming year. So this, a more polished version of what is in your packet will be in the March version of the bridge, and it has the information about the projects we completed and various maintenance activities we completed. This pie, which looks a little bit like Pac-Man for those of us who grew up in the 70s and 80s, this shows the basic distribution of the levy funding. The majority of it, nearly half, goes to street operations, and then the next largest piece of pie goes to our pavement preservation program, and the blue sliver is for Safe School Walk Routes programs. None of these funding sources, or none of these operations are funded solely by the levy. The street operations, for example, is also funded by gas taxes and a portion of the business license fees. We apply for a lot of grant funding for pavement preservation and Safe School Walk Routes programs, so this is essentially half of the program that we're trying to fund for those activities. So street operations, not only does the levy help fund our day-to-day operations, so for example, in this picture, this shows our right-of-way maintenance folks. It also funds our emergent operations, so for example, we had a little bit of ice over the weekend, and we had people out. We had wind, we had people out clearing the right-of-way for that, too. And it also funded, restored programs like local street asphalt repair. It funded sidewalk repair and replacement. This map shows the accomplishments of the operations team in 2017. So the green, I believe, is sidewalk repairs, and there was about 39 sidewalk replacement projects that the team did totaling about 1,100 linear feet of sidewalk replacements. The yellow is asphalt repair. There was about 70 locations that they worked on totaling almost 22,000 square feet of pavement repair. Pavement preservation is a big part of what we do, and water is one of the biggest enemies to our street system, and we have a lot of water here. So one of the projects that we've been doing is crack sealing, and we sealed over 14 miles of cracks in 2017, so this is part of that operation. We also did about an acre and a half of pavement overlay. So one of these pictures is of the grinding that happened on 102nd between Riverside Drive and the bridge, and the other picture is a patch that we did by on Juanita-Woodenville Safe School Walk Routes. So we recruited So we recruited volunteers from Bothell Schools, and as I mentioned, several of them are here tonight. I'm not going to go too deeply into their accomplishments, but the report, the summary report of their work is attached to your agenda packet, talks about, so we needed these folks to act as liaisons between the city and the schools, because they know best what the different schools need. So they brought various items to the city, so needs for sidewalk construction, crosswalk construction, general maintenance of the various walk routes, as well as requests for police enforcement. So we worked with them through all those items, and in the end, we have prioritized lists from them for walk route construction, as well as crosswalk construction. One of the other things we implemented in 2017 was we installed some flashing crosswalks in several locations in the Snohomish County area. This one, this was at our event in September, and this was at, it's near Canyon Creek Elementary and Skyview Junior High. We also implemented a pedestrian flag program, and this picture is from an event we had in May near Frank Love Elementary. This map shows pavement preservation and school walk route projects both in 2017 and 2018. The 2017 projects are in green, as well as the little pedestrian signs you'll see up there, those are the flashing crosswalks. And the orange shows overlay and crack seal projects scheduled for 2018. And the spot up in the northwest, no, northwest corner, in brown, those are the roads that we're planning to do a local seal project this year. This will be Bothell's first slurry seal project in a really long time, and so we're doing a lot of outreach in the community to help people understand what the impacts are going to be. And this is essentially to preserve those local streets. They're in decent shape now, and we're doing some repairs now. Some of our operations team are doing a lot of the repairs, and then we'll have some other repairs that are done by contractors. So as I mentioned, this report, a version of it, will show up in the March edition of the Bothell Bridge. We didn't have, and we still don't have, year-end financial information, so that is not available in the March edition, but it will be in the June edition of the Bothell Bridge. And we'll be bringing that to council and posting it on the Safe Streets webpage by May, is our plan. And with that, if you have any questions for me, and I heard that some of the task force members would like to speak after, so.
Anyone have questions? Councilmember McGuff?
Thank you. So I really, for sure, want to compliment the task force and the work of many of the people who are here, plus I know Ian, you're a part of that as well, but many meetings, but a job really well done between the citizens and the schools themselves. So that was a lot of work, but I think it was obviously well-received by the public who supported the levy. My one question I have is, there's a priority list, and that is on page 59, and it talks about, let's see, two versions of the priority based on the availability of grants. Could you speak a little bit about, so the ones are, if the grants come through, then we see Frank Love, Woodin-Woodmore, and Crystal Springs. If the grants do not come through, then we see a couple of references to the sidewalk on northeast 188th and 19th Avenue southeast between 228th. Could you speak a little bit about the grants and what the potential is for receiving them, and what if we don't?
Sure, I'm going to ask Rita Hu to come up and help me out with this one. So we have received, we did receive three grants for Safe School Walk Routes from the state of Washington last year. 188th is one of them, so I'm killing time while Rita walks up here. And there were two others as well, so.
So when we put together the project list, we try to come up with the alternatives for cost analysis, for each project, so we come up with two design. So that's why we have two analyses for each project. And one of them would be a more complex design, and the other one would be a basic design.
Just follow up shortly. You've received one grant, though, and that was for?
No, we have received, sorry, we have received three grants from Safe Route to School Program.
Excellent, and do you know what the three are?
Yes, so one for NOSIS, 188th Street, and the second one is 7th Avenue, and the third one is 19th Avenue southeast.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Oh, Councilmember McNeil.
Yes, thank you for the presentation. So, on the slurry seal, is that, that's up in the northwest corner?
Yes.
Can you speak a little bit about the process of how that's done?
I can't as well as Jack can. Jack Berman, would you come in? I warned them, so.
So the slurry seal process that we're doing up by Frank Love Elementary School, that is going to be actually a three-part process. What we are going to be doing this early this spring is being some remedial repairs, and that's our crack sealing and our patching. That's also part of what's happening on the arterials, but we're doing it there as well. And then in August, we are going to be putting down, we're going to have a contractor put down the actual slurry seal, which is a, basically an asphalt and fine aggregate mix that is put down over the roads, and then that cures. And what that does is it seals the road in to protect, you know, it's a raincoat, it keeps water from getting in, but also by putting that aggregate on top, it restores some of the wearing course of the ride. And the whole purpose of this is to, it'll freshen up the roads, it'll make them look better, but what it really does is keep them from deteriorating.
Okay, so it's a preventative maintenance type?
Yes.
So it's extending the life of the roadway?
Yes, and like the director said, these roads are in reasonably good condition. And so what we're trying to do is main, keep them that way. One of the things with pavement maintenance is to find that sweet spot before the roads start to deteriorate, and then keeping them that way. You know, like you paint the trim on your house so it doesn't start to rot.
And so slurry seal would be used in the roads in a little bit better condition, the overlays would be done when the roads a little bit more deteriorated?
That's correct.
Is that correct? Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Olson?
So is this different from a chip seal versus a slurry seal, or are they the same, or is it different gradations of rock?
It's actually a quite different process. A chip seal is a layer of asphalt with some larger rock that's put down, and so it has a, you know, a more gravelled look to it. What the slurry seal is, is it's very fine aggregate that's put down with an asphalt emulsion. So it will, it'll actually look a little bit more like an overlay. It'll be black pavement like that. It's a very different process.
Okay, good. I think lots of people, especially cyclists, have some bad feelings about chip seals and everything, so.
Yeah, there, I understand that there's some history with that, and we're exploring other options as well, but right now, slurry seal definitely is the way that we're moving forward, especially for our local roads.
Great, thanks.
Sure.
So, you may have already told me that you can't answer this question, but I'm going to ask it anyway. Regarding, so the levy added an additional, was it four million?
Just over four million dollars.
A year.
First year.
And judging by this map, I, green being 2017 work, can we assume that we didn't spend all four million in the first year because we had a little work to do to set up the priorities and the work?
Yeah, so that's an excellent, excellent point you make, Deputy Mayor, thank you. So this funding is coming in for the purposes that we put in the ordinance. So any funding, and some of these programs, they take a while to get started. We have to do design, and have to go out for bid, and that sort of thing. So the operations team was ready to hit the ground running, whereas for these other projects, it took a little while. So what we're doing on some of these projects, so for example, the local seals, we're going out for essentially two years' worth of funding this year to catch up a little bit. And whatever funding doesn't, isn't spent on the items, the street and sidewalk items that were in the ordinance, they will be put in reserves for future-year funding. So there will be some catch-up on both the pavement projects, as well as sidewalk projects coming up in the next couple of years.
Great, and then regarding, on, I forget what page it was on, but there was an assumption that we would get around $150,000 a year for sidewalks. Are those projections so far looking accurate or conservative?
Yeah, so far, and I'll look to Rita again, so just those three grants alone are well above that amount, $2 million for those three grants, so.
I like that return on investment.
Right, I know. So one of the things, and as we were talking about when we were asking to put this item on the ballot, was that it's not a lot of Safe School Walk Route funding that's in the levy, but it does provide us with a demonstrated match fund that we have coming into the city, that when we apply for these grants, we can say, this money is here and is dedicated to this purpose. So it helps our competitiveness when we, when we apply for grants, both on the preservation side, as well as the walk route side, which, and particularly walk routes, can be very, very competitive, so it's an exciting, it's an exciting thing for us.
It is, and I know a lot of people who are really happy about the 188th work that's coming, so thank you for all your hard work in the presentation.
Thank you all so much.
Moving on to new business, AB 18030, 2018 Work Program and Budget for a Regional Coalition for Housing, Arch.
Can I offer the reminder that we have task force members?
Oh, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. Task force members, please, just come up and introduce yourself, that'd be great.
Hello, my name is Amy Loomis. I am a Bothell resident and represented Shelton View Elementary on the task force. I want to thank the Transportation Department and everyone who involved us as a community in this, to bring to light some of the walk routes and areas that are of great concern to the leadership within the school district. So first off, thanking them for that. My question is, you spoke of the priority, project priority list that we created through our, through our task force meetings, and I'm curious as to whether that is the same level of priorities that we were presented with in our last meeting, and then also, the principal that I work with, is curious as to timeframe implementation on those, and whether there is any further information that you can share with us in that sense.
So we don't usually take questions from visitor comment, but I'm sure that we could put you in touch with the director, and she could answer those questions for you, that she actually knows more than we do.
Yeah, the, it's more that priority list, and that there was a fair amount of discussion, and just would like to understand whether the priority list presented to you is the same list that we left our meetings with.
Do you want to answer, Director Lenhart?
Yes, yes it was.
Great. Thank you for all the work on the task force. We couldn't do what we do without citizens who come up and step up to the plate and help us figure out what the priorities are and speak for the community, so thank you very much. Okay, with that, is there anyone else from the task force who'd like to speak? Okay. Now, AB 18030, 2018 Work Program and Budget for a Regional Coalition for Housing, and here's interim Director Hassler.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor and Council. I'm just going to pull up the presentation for Arthur here. And tonight, with us tonight for the next two items on your agenda is Arthur Sullivan, who is the program manager for Arch. So I'm going to pass it over to Arthur, thank you.
Good evening, Deputy Mayor and Council. My name's Arthur Sullivan, program manager of Regional Coalition for Housing. You have two items on your agenda tonight related to work activities on housing issues and city participation in those. And we will, I'll come back in a minute, but the first one is under the Arch Interlocal Agreement, which you are members of, which is a partnership inter-local agency of 15 cities in East King County and King County, basically as a support system to help individual members on various efforts related to housing, and especially affordable housing activities. Part of the interlocal agreement provides for an annual work program and budget to be developed, and for that work program budget to be approved by all the individual member councils, so that's what we're here for tonight. I wanted to just give you a little bit of background on that. I want to focus more tonight on the second agenda item, which is the annual trust fund, which you've heard from several people during public comments. But just as sort of a real, quick overview of what Arch works on, we work with member cities on planning and regulatory assistance. You'll see a few examples of how we're doing that currently in Bothell. We help with direct assistance. We help members make resources available for affordable housing, such as the trust fund process, and also surplus land. We then help administer and monitor affordable housing created through those regulatory and direct assistance programs undertaken by cities. We currently are monitoring about 5,000 affordable rental units and about 700 affordable ownership units throughout East King County in behalf of the member jurisdictions. And then we help with public information provided to the public regarding affordable housing opportunities in East King County through our website and contacting our office for those people who are certain, need help with affordable housing. And then we also help with general community dialogues and conversations about the topic of housing. Finally, we also work on regional input at regional meetings to represent the interests of cities, and then report back to the cities in those regional conversations. And then there are times when we have special initiatives that are, that all the cities work together on, and we do that from time to time, and the trust fund is sort of one example of that. So that, in a real nutshell, is an overview of the range of activities that we consider when we put together the annual work program. The annual work program is developed with input from all the member jurisdictions. And in this current budget, that process involves your staff, as well as the Arch Executive Board, who are senior administrative staff in all the member jurisdictions who are part of Arch. They develop this recommendation, which then goes back to you. Some of the initiatives that we're looking at on a more regional scale this year is we've been re-examining, and I believe Deputy Mayor has been involved in conversations amongst all the members about sort of the goals of funding of affordable housing and the city's contributions there. We've been working a lot on transit center and opportunities to create affordable housing in proximity, and you see one proposal, two proposals, tonight that are sort of the outcome, but there's more areas, we've been talking with Sound Transit, about others, and helping cities in those conversations. Similarly, we've worked with a number of cities on using surplus and underutilized land for housing, and then you heard tonight from two of the folks about the winter shelters, and you are seeing that come back. But that was a conversation started four or five years ago, in which we brought together staff from all the cities to talk about a more sustainable approach to dealing with the shelter component of dealing with homelessness. So those are some of the broad-scale things that we've been working on. We've been working with a number of cities on housing strategy plans, and we've actually been working with your city for the last year, and we'll be coming back to you next month for your conversation at the council level. There are also some times where there are special local initiatives and things that seem to be out there. Accessory dwelling units have been expressed a lot of interest about 15 years ago. We did a collective conversation, we might want to start that back up again in the next coming year. We also, a lot of interest in the topic of preservation of existing housing is another common theme. So when there's enough of a common theme amongst members, we can sort of host a joint conversation. Another area of that is with the King County Housing Authority. They have housing vouchers, and is our They have housing vouchers and as our market gets more expensive, they are looking for ways to find more opportunities for people to use vouchers in East King County, and that's something we've been working with them for the past year and have some ideas of, we're going to work with individual cities in the next year about how to link land use program, incentive programs with the housing voucher program. So those are some of the broader scale things that we work on that are listed in the work program. But there's also in the work program sections for each city in which specific initiatives for those cities are worked on. The ones that you show in this year for you include the completion of the housing strategy so that we're now to the point of discussion with the council. And then there is one of the things that's been out on the plate for about a year and that we're waiting for the housing strategy is looking at various zoning incentives, so different areas where linkages of changes to zoning to specific affordable housing provisions. And then finally, out of the housing strategy, there could be some top-tier strategies that come out of that where we would look to assist your, your staff and the commission and the council in moving those forward in the next year. So those are some of the specific activities related to the City of Bothell for this year. So with that, I didn't know if you wanted to have, ask questions first about the work program and budget. There is a budget that is included. Again, the process for that is it's put together by those, by the Arch Executive Board, and it shows an overall increase of 3.5% for the, this year with 2.5% increase for the City of Bothell in that budget presentation, which is included as an attachment.
Does anybody have questions at this point? Okay, I think you can keep going.
Okay. Probably the more interesting of the two items that we have, and this is the Housing Trust Fund. This is a program that has been one of the areas in which cities ask Arch to help coordinate the allocation of resources for affordable housing. This is a fairly unique program, not only for this state but for this country, in which cities, multiple cities come together with their resources to use a common application process to create a wide range of affordable housing within a market area that encompasses the cities who participate in Arch, which is basically East King County. To date, that system has funded over 3,300 units of affordable housing for families, seniors, homeless, and special needs. You can see a more detailed list in attachment two of your packet on page 23 that lists all the individual projects, where they're located, and most importantly, the agencies, and you heard from several of them tonight, who were the ones who put these deals together and arranged all the other funding. We have goals to create that range of housing that you see listed on this slide, and we have a goal to have not only the balance in the type of housing, but to have affordable housing created throughout East King County and all the communities who are members of Arch with a balance over time. Those resources that you see that have been made available include a variety of different sources, and I want to shift to the next page, and those sources include general fund dollars, about 40%, which is what we're here for tonight for your share, federal community development block grant funds administered through King County, which have been about 20% of funds, and then other sources, which have included land discounts or donations by cities, fee waivers, or when projects, some of the projects receive grant, loans, when the loans are repaid, those money circulate into other future projects. As I mentioned, the goal is to have geographic balance over time, to do both new development and preservation of existing housing, to fund projects as both loans and grants, depending on their circumstances, generally homeless and special needs are grants, but if it's more sort of lower income for families and seniors, they're done as contingent loans where depending on the performance of the property, they may repay the city some of the resources back. That's been over $6 million over the years have been repaid back to cities that have been able to have been circulated back and is part of the resources that are being used tonight in the proposal that you will see for this year. And that has leveraged over $400 million of other public and private resources. That's where the hard work is done by the agencies that you see listed. Yours is just one small piece that helps get the ball rolling, but there's a lot of other public and private funds that go into these projects. One of the more unique things we've been able to achieve through this system is that there have been a number of federally assisted but privately owned housing in East King County or throughout the country, whose contracts expired after 20 years and they could convert to market rate. We have managed to preserve 600 of the 650 units within that federal assistance, which provides the most affordable housing we have in our communities, because you pay based on your ability to pay rather than just a set rent level. So those are some overviews of the trust fund. This year, we are coming to you with a proposal for four projects to receive funding assistance. The process we use to come to this point is that we accept applications from individuals, agencies on different proposals. We received five, there is a fifth one, but it's being funded just by one city, Kirkland on its own, so we don't have, it's not coming to you. We have a citizen advisory board, which consists of residents from throughout East King County with housing and community backgrounds. We start with a staff report in which that is shared with all the city staffs who are members. We then meet with the city staff to get any questions and comments they have. We then go to the citizen advisory board, who spend several evening reviewing the proposals and developing recommendations. In your packet, that then goes on to the Arch Executive Board, and then it comes back to every council to vote on their piece, and there is one table in your packet that shows the total amounts and then how much from each city being proposed. I will go to that slide next, and this is a summary of the, of the four projects that are in front of you. This year has been a very unique year for us because what you have in front of you is a proposal for four, and as I mentioned, there is a fifth project, and if all are able to be completed, it will be just under 400 units and beds for one year. We have been funding approximately 100, maybe up to 150 per year for about the last five or more years. This is a level of participation and activity we have not seen in a very long time, partially as a response because we had some more funds for more cities, as well as you stepping up to the plate with some general fund dollars. In addition, we were thrown a twist with the state capital budget because one of those leveraged funding sources is the state housing trust fund, which is funded through the capital budget, which was not available in the fall. We also have a market of rising construction costs that we were trying to address. And what's been very interesting is of these five projects that we have, or the four you see in front of you, most of those were initiated by member cities. You heard a lot from the shelter tonight. The project at the Housing Authority is on land that the city did an RFP for, and the City of Kirkland has been working for a year and a half with the local faith community to work on their shelters. What has made this round possible then, and the amount of funding and the amount of units, has been a combination of having some more funds available through the trust fund process, but three of our cities stepping up to the plate and finding additional sources of funds avail, one-time sources available to complement the trust fund resources. Those amounts come to over $10 million. They've come from a combination of fee waivers of over $2 million by the City of Issaquah. Let's see, we also have in-lu fees from the City of Kirkland where they, and the City of Redmond for the project and, for the Astera project. The City of Kirkland did a land sale and took the proceeds from that land sale, and there are also, as you see, Kirkland is using a portion of their REIT funds in order to help fund the shelter. So quite a creative and complex round that we have this year. The packet that you have from you, from the executive board includes a memorandum from the board, which includes a little more detailed description of the four projects. It also shows the rationale for why the advisory board and the executive board recommended those projects, as well as a number of conditions. Those conditions are meant to address the unique circumstances of this round. A number of projects have contingent awards, which need to go back, and they were put in there because of the rising construction costs, but they need to go back to the executive board for further review before those final amounts would be released for that purpose. Again, we have grants and/or loans that vary depending on the different projects. We have conditions related to being management in terms of managing parking, because some of the cities reduce parking requirements to make sure that that works, or to be good neighbors, such as in the case of the shelter, to make sure they work with the surrounding community. And there's also, because of the state trust fund, there is a request to have a contingency award of 2018 funds in case the state trust fund, which is just started, does not fund the Astera project. So the four projects in summary that you have in front of you and you heard, I haven't gone into detail because you kind of heard from all the groups already, you have the Women's and Family Shelter in Kirkland, there is the Imagine Housing Astera Park Project. Not only is it a 260 unit, but the Astera Park Block is the old group health site right next to where the light rail will go, and it will have almost 3,000 total housing units. So the idea behind this project is to create market rate housing. A number of the private developments will include housing at 80% of median under their land use code requirements, and then one builder made an in-lu payment so that they could help subsidize this project. So the idea is there will be affordability from 30, from homeless all the way up to 80% of median integrated into this new master plan community. Then you heard about the Trailhead Project from the Housing Authority, and then finally one you didn't hear about, which is a small, a group home by congregations for the homeless. They have been leasing homes in East King County for the last 10 years with rising costs. They'd like to be able to rent a home, I mean, purchase a home so that they have the stability of ownership of that home. And so this is a proposal for one, for them to go out and buy one home and sort of test and see how that program can work in an ownership model. So with that, I'll stop and answer questions that you may have.
Who has questions? Councilmember Zorn?
One, Arthur, having sat on Planning Commission, thank you for the hours and hours that have gone into addressing the needs for Bothell. I really appreciate it. And, and was it this spring, Deputy Mayor Dour and I got to go tour Sophia Way and just were really excited to see the work that was going on in Bellevue with Sophia Way and how they genuinely meet women's needs and helping them get on their feet. So my question for you, and it's, it's just a, a small confusion on my part, in our packet we have referenced, and it got my attention because it's in cap letters, so that made it look official to me. I'm guessing it's just a concept, but if it's a real document somewhere, I'm curious to see it, and that's the Parity Program.
You, when we come back to you in about a month, we will be able to bring that back for the conversation with the council when we talk about the housing.
So it is something.
So there is a real document called Parity Program.
Okay, that's what I need to know, thank you.
Anyone else? Councilmember McNeil.
Yes, thank you for your presentation and your, your partnership. I had a question on slide six. You showed a Issaquah Village, and I believe it said the YMCA.
This one? Yes.
Slide six, I thought, maybe I'm, maybe it was seven.
Well, you, well, if you're, let me go up, but I believe it's the Astera Project. I don't see the YMCA here, but the YMCA is.
Or YWCA, sorry. So you partnered with the Y.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay. This is just an example of a project that was funded several years ago.
Okay, so that project actually was done in collaboration with the YWCA?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, they did the project, we helped fund it, so yes, on city donated land.
So the city donated the land, the YWCA funded it through partnership with Arch.
And about 10 other funding sources.
10 other funding sources, okay. So the next question I have is, how, how long does it take from a, from a project onset, when it starts, get on the list and get approved? What's a typical timeframe?
In terms of the trust fund process?
Yes.
When a project comes to us, we're hoping by the time it comes to us, it will apply to us in the early fall, and we're here with you in the first quarter. Now, some of those projects have been worked on for anywhere from six months to four years before they show up in the trust fund formal process. The South Kirkland Park and Ride, I don't know if you're familiar with that, that has in another Imagine Housing property above a park and, you know, the expansion of the park and ride included housing. I probably worked on that project six years before it got to the funding stage. We helped with rezones, we helped with MFTE program, we worked for years on that, then had to do an RFP through the county, but, but, and so that one took years before it got to the trust fund step.
And so did they, the land that that sits on obviously was owned by Metro?
Correct.
King County already.
Yes.
So there was time.
Exactly.
To go ahead and move forward with that project. The Imagine Housing Project in Totem Lake?
Yes.
The two side-by-side projects there, were those also pre-owned land?
That was privately purchased land.
Okay.
And one they were able to develop relatively quickly, the other one, for the first year or two, the owner kept a note on the property, and then after that, the county came in with a land fund and helped them buy it and hold it for a couple of years until they could pull all the financing together.
Okay, so these, these projects do take, take some time.
They can.
Okay, and is there any projects that you guys are working on currently within our city?
In your city, not exactly, but if you noticed, I mentioned in the work program that we're doing a lot of work with transit site and different transit corridors, so that might be one of the things that elevates in your housing strategy where, you know, we have been, like Bellevue is now working on some properties that are sound transit-controlled. Whether or not some type of partnership along those lines might emerge with, along the 522 corridor, is something we'll be talking to you about with the housing strategy, and if there's interest there, then we would potentially be working there. Now, one project is non-site specific, which is the adult family, I mean, the single men's group home. They will go, they will be looking throughout East King County. Once they find a site, they will go to that, or a home, they will go to that city and say, I have a home in your community and any input, or, and they'll reach out to that neighborhood. So that one is not site-specific yet.
Okay, and you're, I take it this is predominantly King County? Or is this Snohomish County also?
We would, we do the Arch sphere of influence, and your city we know crosses the boundary, and now that you have general fund dollars participating, we would look anywhere within the City of Bothell.
Okay, so there's opportunities potentially in Snohomish County also? Okay, fabulous, thank you.
Who else has questions? Councilmember McAuliffe.
Thank you. So I kind of went looking, I went looking at your map today to see, you know, kind of what existed in all the different cities, and what I saw was that Bothell really was cut off at King. So all the information that I was looking for for Snohomish was not there.
In terms of?
In the map that showed what was available throughout the different cities.
Oh, okay, you, it's, okay, so I'll, I'd have to go back and double-check that. I'm not sure there's any explicit reason for doing that.
Okay.
I'm not sure what you have in the Snohomish portion of the area.
Yeah, I just went to your, your online, to the map program to see if I, as a, as a public person, could find my way through it.
Right.
And I did notice that Bothell was only King County.
Any other questions? Okay, I think most of mine were answered. So I want, I want to talk about Sophia Way a little bit too. For people who don't know about Sophia Way, I can't say enough, I, it was eye-opening when I visited. There were things that I just didn't understand as a layperson. For instance, the, the one in Bellevue is for women, and the average age was like, what, 55? And most of those women were stay-at-home moms. And then their husband dies and they're left with nothing. It was, it was really shocking to me, and the work they do is, it's really amazing because they, they provide a place, a safe place to start getting their lives back together. So I can't say enough about, about what they do there. And then I just wanted to reiterate, so Arthur's mentioned a couple of times, but last year, last budget cycle was the last time, or the first time Bothell has put general fund dollars. So previous to that, all we've done is act as a member. We haven't actually done anything, and so I'm really proud that, that our council stepped up and done that. So with that, do I have any motions? We need to, we need one for AB 18030 first. Yeah.
Move the recommended action.
That's always the safe one. Motion made by Councilmember Agnew, seconded by Councilmember McNeil? Oh, sorry, Councilmember McAuliffe, did you make them second?
Yes.
To approve the 2018 Arch Work Program and Administrative Budget. Please pay, please make your votes. Motion passes unanimously with Mayor Rayum absent and excused. And AB 18031, do we have a motion for that recommended action? And AB 18031, do we have a motion for that recommended action? Motion made by Councilmember McNeil, seconded by Councilmember Agnew. Would you like to speak to your motions? No? I would just like to thank Arthur for all his hard work. I didn't mention it before, but I watched a good bit of the Planning Commission meetings and the work that they did, and it was quite in-depth, and you were really, I don't, you led a great process, I thought, so thank you. Okay, so with that, motions on the floor, please. And that passes unanimously with Mayor Rayum absent and excused. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much, Council.
Okay, so it's 10 of eight. Can we make it through the next agenda item before break? Everyone okay with that?
That's up to you.
I am normally the one who needs the break. I can bear it, because I know Sarah's been waiting there for some time. So with that, AB 18032, Landmark Preservation Board Recommendation to Place Washington Federal Savings and Loan Building on the Bothell Register of Historic Landmarks. Sarah Desamone. Welcome.
Deputy Mayor.
Hello.
Could we have a speak, a quick moment for the city attorney?
Oh, yeah, city attorney.
Thank you. So I just wanted the public to know that before the meeting, Councilmember, hang on a second, sorry. Councilmember Olson contacted me and let me know that he was, I'm fine, I promise. Nope. Councilmember Olson contacted me and indicated that he was on the land, on the Landmark Preservation Board when this item was brought before that board, and he asked if, because he's now on the council, if he has to recuse himself. And the answer is no, because he doesn't have a financial interest in the outcome, and he wanted to make it clear that he had, he has heard this, he's heard this presentation before, he's familiar with this subject matter, and so I'll leave it to him as to whether or not he participates or recuses, but he is not required by law to do so. Thank you.
Councilmember Olson.
I still want to participate in this, hey?
Okay, great, let's move forward then, thank you.
All right, good evening, Deputy Mayor and Council. My name is Sarah Desamone. I'm the Historic Preservation Consultant for the city. I work in community development, and I also provide staff support for the Landmark Preservation Board. I am here tonight to present the Bothell Register of Historic Landmark nomination for the Washington Federal Savings and Loan Building. It is the Bothell Jewelers Building, for those of you who are familiar with that, located at 10130 Main Street on Bothell, Washington, 98011. I'll keep this very brief. The Bothell Register of Historic Landmarks was created to recognize and also provide a little bit of protection for historic buildings that have certain architectural and cultural significance to the city. In order to be eligible, they have to be at least 50 years old. They have to have a certain level of integrity of location, design, setting, materials, workmanship, feeling, and association, which basically means they just have to sort of represent their original state and location, and they need to fall into one of 13 categories of historic significance, which is outlined in Title 22. In addition, owner permission is required for nomination in Bothell, and nominated properties can be eligible for incentives, including some tax relief, special valuation, like what McMenamin's got, and also some other zoning exceptions sometimes, or grants from King County's Fore Culture Organization. And this particular owner is planning to apply for a grant from Fore Culture to fix this roof, so that is something to keep in mind. This particular building was built in 1936, so it's clearly older than 50 years. It's like 82, I think, and it's eligible under two of the designation criteria that are outlined in Title 22. One, that it's associated with events that have made a significant contribution to the broad patterns of national, state, or local history. So in this case, it was built for the original location of what is today Washington Federal Bank. It was built as Washington Federal Savings and Loan Association of Bothell, so it was just a single branch in downtown Bothell, but it then, through a series of acquisitions, it became the current Washington Federal. It also is significant under criteria D, which is embodying the distinctive architectural characteristics of a type, period, style, or method of construction. It is an Art Deco-style commercial building, as we can see. Some of the characteristics involved in Art Deco are that they have kind of a square or rectangular appearance. They can be simple, or they can be really detailed, like the Empire State Building. They have a lot of geometric shapes on them, and kind of smooth wall surfaces are common, so that clearly demonstrates those. It's also a, what we call a one-part commercial block, which is basically just a, a small storefront in a downtown, which we see everywhere. So the building, in terms of its integrity, it has integrity of all of the characteristics. There are some minor changes. So as you can see in the photos, the storefront, the glass part of the storefront has been just modified a little bit compared to the old one, where it used to have some more vertical lines in there. So that's been replaced at some point, and I don't have a date on that, we couldn't find that anywhere. But overall, the storefront is the same configuration, same shape, there hasn't been any major modification there. And then it also still has the writing up underneath the awning there that says Washington Federal Savings and Loan, and it has the geometric shapes across the cornice, so it's pretty well intact there, not a whole lot of change. And also, oops, excuse me, the, the awning is removable, so it's something that could be taken off, and it would have even more significance. Let's see, so based on these findings, the Landmark Board has recommended approval, so I will turn it over to you guys.
Thank you very much. Does anyone have any questions? Councilmember McAuliffe.
Thank you. So I kind of went, read through everything, and I just didn't understand, the building is not just the Washington Federal Savings and Loan, but also the Bothell Jewelry?
It is now the Bothell Jewelers, but in the past, it was built as Washington Federal Savings and Loan.
I.
So it's kind of confusing, and that's part of why he put that awning up there at some point, is because it, people go, what, what is this? So.
Excellent, I'm very pleased.
You want to say something, don't you? Well, I'm thrilled, I'm really, really excited, I think, short of the awning, this is an awesome building. And I would love, I would love more buildings on Main Street to apply for landmark designation. So thank you for your hard work, and with that, I'm happy to take a motion. Oh, did I miss something? Oh, okay. Councilmember McNeil makes the motion, a second?
I'll second it.
Councilmember Olson, seconds? Please, please your votes. We're on a roll. Motion passes unanimously with Mayor Rayum absent and excused, and with that, I think we'll take a break until 8:10.
Thank you.